I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Do you know how to do it Cheryl or do you want?
I got it. Just a little bit higher.
All right. Next item up on our agenda is our Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. I see we got a couple here. Come on down.
Mayor and Town Council, I have Omar Castillo, 12519 Prince Creek Drive, Parker, Colorado. I have the honor and privilege of introducing our interim executive director of the Parker Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Kara. Also.
Hi Kara, how are you?
I'm gonna let him do the deed tonight so I can learn.
You can learn.
So yeah, so a couple of things we're working on at the, at the chamber. We had wine walks two weeks ago, had a phenomenal crowd, one of the biggest crowds that we've had. Got some feedback from the area restaurants, which they're always happy when we can bring quite a few people into town. So a lot of good positive feedback from that. The other thing we're working on obviously is Parker Days. We're getting ready to sit down and meet with Peg and Dean from the event company that did it for us last year. Looking to hopefully sign a contract with them here pretty quickly. Hopefully here soon, rather sooner than later. So we have that going on. And then we talked about wine walks real briefly and then, and then movies in the park this Saturday. It's gonna be over here at Discovery Park. And it's Ralph Breaks the Internet, so it was one of the rainouts.
I wanted to see that one too.
It's a good one. It's a good one. And actually it's pretty cool. It's a really good movie. We've seen it a handful of times with the kids. So it's a good movie, but we're gonna be doing that this coming Saturday as well. So next time you'll be hearing from Ms. Kara herself.
Yeah, excellent. I know some of us have known Kara for a long, long time. She used to make trophies for my boys' sports, for everyone's kid's sports way back when. So, any questions council? Nope. All right. Thank you very much. Next up is our D- oh.
Omar's not going far.
I'm not going far.
Next up is our DBA update. How do we get Jeff up here? I don't know.
More than happy to come up here. So a couple. So a couple of things that we've been working on at the, at the DBA is obviously as many of you are in here, we did our first annual cornhole tournament. It was really, really cool. We had about 350 people that came to watch and came to participate. All 36 teams did sell out within the first 24 hours of us releasing it. So it was a huge success. So we've got a lot of great positive feedback from everybody and a lot of cool things to work on and do for next year. We're looking to maybe doing it twice a year and maybe one in the spring and one in the fall and hopefully make it a little bit bigger since it was such a huge success.
Do you want to share with everyone where the mayor's players ended up in position?
I don't want to embarrass you, man.
Dead last.
I'll let you handle that one.
Yeah, dead last. Mrs. Mayor and Mr. Mayor can't play cornhole worth a darn. It was the wind. The wind kept blowing the.
Totally. So a lot of great positive feedback. So we've got a lot of good things to work on, on that front. So the cool ironic part that I think I wanted to share with everybody is the team that actually won was from Colorado Springs. But they were never signed up to play. They just showed up to see if they could get into the tournament. So I think that was really pretty cool that they just showed up and they won and.
Toborx tossers.
They got $500. So the other thing that we're really.
Have to spend it in Parker before they.
Yeah, it was, yeah, there was, the bills looked, had Josh's face on it.
Yeah, exactly. It was Parker money.
Parker bucks?
Yeah, so the other thing that we worked on that a lot of help, help from you guys and help from a lot of people in this room was we did the trolley a couple of weeks ago with the wine walks and talk about a huge success. We ended up running it from 5 to 9 p.m. on the Friday of wine walks. We served 200, over 200 people, nothing but positive feedback. The feedback we're actually getting now is when is it coming? When will it be here and what days will it be here? So a lot of great stuff that night. It brought another unique crowd that I think that's so cool about some of the events that we put on is it always brings out different crowds for different events. So a lot of faces that we haven't seen before, a lot of people that came down just to ride the trolley, which was pretty neat, and a lot of families that came down to ride the trolley. So a lot of good stuff that we're working on. We're gonna get together and kind of go over some of the surveys that we've got and that we took for that night and then kind of go from there and just build from there and kind of see where, kind of see where this thing goes. So.
Cool, cool. Questions guys? Cheryl?
Just on your trolley, what was your route?
So it started at Vines. So it started at Vines and then it went clear down to the, to Jim Anis's old building, Victorian Peaks. That was one stop. And then the other stop was the Pace Center. And then it came back down and it stopped at the old water building. And then from there it went to Vines. And then it crossed, crossed Parker Road and it went over to Barnett's in Elk Mountain. And then it came back around. So the average trip was about 30, 35, 40 minutes at the most. So it ran really perfect. But one of the things that we did get when it was the last drop off at nine o'clock, people were wanting to get on and were trying to get on and it's like, no, we're done for the night. So a lot of people were still wanting to ride it at the end of the evening, at the end of the wine walks and the event. So it was really great. It was really good.
Congratulations. Great idea.
I'm sorry? That's when you turn on the Uber sign.
Yeah, totally. Exactly.
I did have several businesses ask me how much it would cost for them to be a stop. And I said that, you know, the DBA would, once the DBA figures out what they're gonna do and all that. So it was very popular, not only with the people there, but also businesses were going, whoa, that's, and not Main Street businesses, like other off Main Street businesses were asking.
Perfect. Yeah, no, that's the thing. We wanted to bring that awareness and then, you know, what do we do next? And we're gonna get together and kind of try to figure out what the next steps are. So.
Cool.
Any other questions?
No. All right. Thank you very much.
Well done, sir.
All right. Next up, we have our public comment section. These are for items that are not on our agenda. If you're here for an item that's on our agenda, there'll be public comment opportunity for that. There's a three-minute time limit. No action will be taken. There's a clock above me and a clock on the wall. The first public comment session is limited to 30 minutes. And if all of you in the room wanted to take their three minutes, we would probably not make that 30 minutes, but we would then move you to the end of the meeting. So if there's anyone here for general public comment, we'll open it at 7:13 p.m. This is your time to come down. You gotta sign over there too. You have to, they have a little signup sheet. When you're done.
I signed up the signup sheet when I was.
Oh, you did? Okay, sweet chicken.
Thank you.
Oh, look at this. I get it delivered. This is a new process.
Delivery, that's new.
Okay, so I have to, it's like eight pages deep and there's one name on it.
You didn't tip him though. I'm disappointed. Anyway.
Steven Curtis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council. My name is Steven Curtis. My address is 22104 East Ottawa Drive. I come to you this evening to talk to you about a resolution 19-005. I would bet less than half of you remember what that is, so I'll refresh your memory somewhat. That is the resolution that established parts of the Ottawa neighborhood as residential permitted parking. And that evening when that resolution passed, I had asked this council prior to the vote that, given words we heard from members of the council, buy-in, stake in the game, and the ultimate goal, which was to bring them to the table, them being the administration from Legend High School and the school district, I had asked at that time that the town also provide some buy-in and a little stake in this game and cease the leasing agreement otherwise of three quarters of Tomah Meadows Park parking lot as Legend High School parking. Four nights from tonight will be eight months since we had this conversation about this resolution. And the park is still three quarters dedicated to parking at Legend High School. So I'm here as most citizens should be with their elected officials to hold you accountable to what I had asked you to do and ask that you refer back to that evening what I had asked for and provide some update to, to me at what the town has done in relation to the parking at that park. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:15 p.m. Steven will get with staff and get a response back to on that, okay? All right, so next item up on our agenda is reports and items and comments from mayor and council. Mr. Rivero.
Oh, man.
Want me to go to the other side? All right, Mr. Dyak.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I can recall outside of the fantastic Labor Day holiday will be Dr. Cog Retreat. Two weekends ago, I went up to Keystone with 40-some members of the board. We talked about visioning and strategy. It was, it was a fantastic event and looking forward to this upcoming year.
Debbie.
Honestly, just got back from the lowlands and, you know, sea level in Memphis just a few hours ago and I, I wasn't thinking about doing this and I cannot recall because I didn't go to the Dr. Cog retreat.
If you went to the Dr. Cog, it would not have been a highlight. Jeff? Nothing. Cheryl?
Yeah, just that the Douglas County Housing Authority had requested a resolution, which I'm assuming got signed. I, it was the one I sent to you for their, they had to go forward with their authorization for funding.
I don't know. I think we discussed and who should be the appropriate person to sign.
Yeah, and I don't know if that ever got finalized, but. Okay, so that's what it, they are moving forward with a few projects in Castle Rock and Highlands Ranch, but that's, you know, where the targeted funding is at this point. That's all.
Josh?
Not much. I had the pleasure of sitting down with County Commissioner A. Bladen. We met in his neck of the woods at another wonderful locally-owned coffee shop in Lone Tree. And had a cup of coffee or two and just chatted and filled each other in. It was a great meeting. Always reminding ourselves how great we are in Douglas County as far as partnership goes. And we just reaffirm that between the two of us that it's very important to keep the lines of communication and all that cliche stuff. But it was, it was a good meeting and everybody's on the same page.
Sweet. All right. Next item up is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. Ordinances that are on the consent agenda are for introduction only and won't be removed for further discussion. Counsel in front of you, you have consent agenda items 6A and 6B.
I move to approve consent agenda items 6A and B, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie. Counsel, in just a sec, your little voting boxes will pop up. You will click a button. And motion passes unanimously. Next item up, item 7A. This is a public hearing for ordinance number 1.523.4 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2019 revised budget for the town of Parker and to make appropriations for the same. Rhonda, you are our ringleader tonight.
Here I am. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this budget revision is to amend the appropriated funds for the year 2019. The proposed revision will increase the Parks and Recreation Fund expenditures by $500,000. That's related to the H2O renovation project. These funds were transferred from the Recreation Fund on the last budget amendment, so this will now allow us to expend the funds out of the Parks and Recreation Fund. And also, the revision will increase revenues and expenditures in the General Fund by $3,651 to account for some contributions that the town received that are related to the K-9 units and the Cultural Fund to increase revenue and expenditures by $9,900 to account for the floor refinishing. That was an in-kind contribution. And that's what this amendment's for. And if you have any questions, I can go into further details.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Rhonda? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:19 p.m. If there's anyone here to address counsel on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:19 and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.523.4 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Debbie and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is public hearing 7B. This is for most of Lot 4, Gobbler's Knob subdivision, use by special review for exotic pet boarding. There is about eight words in that sentence that I never thought I would hear in the same sentence. Gobbler's, knob, exotic, most, all that. So, all right, so again, this is a use by special review for exotic pet, exotic pet boarding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Like you said, this is a proposal for a use by special review to allow an exotic pet boarding facility. The Creature Comforts Pet Hotel is proposing to open on the property located at 12543 North State Highway 83rd and Unit 326. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of Parker Road and Pine Lane. Unit 326 is located on the west side of the building on the ground floor, which is located below most of the tenants you see from Parker Road. This property is located within the commercial office and retail park planning area of the Pine Lane Plaza Plan Development. The proposed, proposed use intends to primarily board exotic animals such as birds and reptiles. No dogs, cats, or hoofed animals will be boarded at this facility. And additionally, animals prohibited within the town's LDO will not be accepted. The facility will be open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 8 to 5 p.m., Saturday and Sunday from 9 a.m. to 2 p.m., and the facility will be closed to the public on Wednesdays. During open hours, drop-up and pickup time will be limited to 30-minute appointment only. All animals will be required to be transported into the facility within a cage, and the animals to be boarded at this facility do not require an outdoor area. If approved, this will be the only facility that boards all types of exotic animal species within the Denver metro area. There are nine criteria used to evaluate the use by special review. These criteria ensure that the use will be consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Staff has reviewed the proposal as outlined within the staff report and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. The project satisfies the nine criteria required in the LDO for the use by special review, and the public notice requirements have been met. Planning Commission heard this request on August 22nd of 2019 and recommended approval. Therefore, staff and planning commission recommend that the town council approve the use by special review request to allow an exotic pet boarding facility use in the Pine Lane Plaza Plan Development with the six conditions outlined in the staff report. Staff is available for any questions that council members may have, and the applicant is also present this evening to answer any operational questions.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, counsel. Before we invite the applicant up, do you have any questions? Cheryl?
It's been years since I've been in that particular unit, but when I was in it last, it was an unfinished dirt floor type unit. Is that still that or has it been more of a tenant finish to it?
It'll be a tenant finish. They have their building permit in now and they'll be working to modify the space.
Okay.
Other questions? No? Does the applicant have anything else they'd like to add? If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Pachin Shaw, 11453 Donley Drive here in Parker.
I'm Jennifer Neistrom, 2395 Elkhorn Street, Parker, Colorado.
So that's two Jennifers?
Yes.
Nice, love it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We just wanted to kind of go over a little bit. Usually people have questions about exotics. The first thing they always seem to think of is snakes. We probably won't be boarding a lot of snakes, but we did kind of want to let you guys know a little bit of our background and credentials. So you have an understanding of why we're doing this, who we are doing this, that type of thing. Do you want to go first, Jennifer?
Yeah. I currently own and operate Parker Exotic Pets off of Cottonwood Drive. I have, we've run that store for seven and a half years now. And we have realized there's a big need for boarding the exotic pets. In addition to boarding exotic pets, you have to know what you're doing. And you have to be a type of, a certain type of person. Between Jennifer and I, we have a lot of experience with exotics. So I just wanted to kind of put that on the table, so.
And I will actually be the person at the facility most often. And just to give you a quick idea of what I've been doing, two days after I graduated from CSU in '93, I was working at Cheyenne Mountain Zoo. I have also worked the retail side, the wholesale side. I was a veterinary nurse on and off for about 20 years' experience. I have worked with research animals, and that is what I currently do at the moment. I also own many exotic animals, especially special needs. With my veterinary medicine background, that will actually help for some people that are nervous about leaving their pets. Because right now, for me to board my animals, I have birds, reptiles, and dogs, I have to take my lizards to Jen's store. I have to take my birds out to Golden to board, and they're all special needs. And then somebody has to come to the house to look at the dogs and the tortoises. And so like Jen said, we know there's a need for this. And with my veterinary medicine background, my interest in animal behaviorism, the attention to detail, we just know this is a niche facility that is long past due, not just for Parker, but for the Denver metro area.
Cool. Counsel, do you have any questions? Jeff?
Do you want me to ask now or after?
You ask now. If it's, if it's of the applicant, do you have questions for the applicant?
So, so on your, your schematic that you had here, there's also showing mammals. Well.
Small mammals.
Okay, so what is, what is it? Is it like ferrets and?
Rabbits, ferrets, guinea pigs, chinchillas, gerbils, hamsters. Pardon?
Not dogs and cats?
No, no dogs, cats, or hoofed animals. There are more dog and cat facilities, or people that understand those types of pets too. So.
And then what are sugar gliders?
I was gonna ask that because I'm like, I'd like to buy a six-pack of them, because they sound.
We were asked that at Planning Commission too.
A sugar glider is a possum from Australia.
Really?
Wow.
Yeah, very, very cute, very, very popular pet.
Little.
Very, very cute, yeah.
That's one of the mammals. Pigmy hedgehogs, another one of the mammals we have.
And then what are your fees on, obviously they range, right?
No, you can't board your kids. It's just, they don't follow.
Even though they're mammals, they don't follow. I have one that's a sugar glider for sure.
If they fit in a macaw cage.
They can bend. But what, what's your rates? Like what's, what's it take to board a snake, a lizard, a sugar glider?
Snakes are actually probably the easiest because they probably need the least amount of attention because most of them do not eat on a daily basis. But it varies. We are less than local veterinary clinics that do this. Our range for birds going from budgies up to macaws, it's a different range in prices from about $10 a night up to about $15 to $17.50 a night. And we do do it by night, not by the day. So we don't have that cut off.
Interesting. And the same for the other types of animals?
Yeah, there's a range depending on, and there's also a discount. If a family has like birds that live together in the same cage, there'll be a slightly discounted rate for that.
What a cool business.
Cool. Other questions? Thank you very much. Since it's a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:28 p.m. If Mr. Curtis would like to come up for public comment, because I think he's the only, well, and our friends from the DBA in the chamber. All right, seeing no movement, we'll close public comment at 7:28 p.m. And I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I just, I just want to say, I apologize. My daughter has been bugging us for a bird, and we made her do her research. We do travel quite often, and we've always been able to say, I'm sorry, honey, but we travel.
So thanks a lot for keeping them in Parker now.
So there'll be a parakeet soon. We'll be visiting you.
Cheryl?
I was just gonna say, you know, I never thought about this kind of a business, and I certainly didn't know what a sugar glider was. But, well, a lot of what you have are, a lot of kids and people have these kinds of pets. And they have to find someplace to put them when they want to go on vacation because they don't travel well. So good luck with it.
All right, I'd entertain a motion then, please.
I move to approve the Gobbler's Knob Lot 4 use by special review request to allow an exotic pet boarding facility based upon staff findings with the six conditions contained in the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Cheryl. Counsel, in just a moment, you'll get to vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Good job, Brianna.
My wife's a science teacher and for years she had red ear sliders. And I don't know if you do turtles or not. It was always. Yeah, right. It legitimate, I mean, you guys are gonna do great. It legitimately affected our ability to go travel because, you know, even with the timed feeder and things like that, the sliders couldn't be left alone that, that long or they'd kill each other, you know? So congratulations.
Brianna, was that your first? Well done.
I know, we should have had some harder que- I'm sorry, I forgot to say that it was her first. We should have been like really hard on, no, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. So you can always go down as your first one had the word exotic, gobbler's knob, all this. Wonderful. All right, next up is item 8A. This is ordinance number 5.75.2 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 6.02 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning protection of nonsmokers from involuntary exposure to tobacco and marijuana smoke in indoor areas open to the public. Kristin, please talk to us about smoke.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an ordinance brought to you in response to House Bill 191076, which passed the legislature this year, and that amended the Colorado indoor, Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act. And so it prompted some revisions to our corresponding ordinance, which is contained in Chapter 6.02. I'll just take you through those briefly. It does, it starts out by first amending some definitions. We did have a definition for electronic smoking device. These changes align with the statutory definition of importance to counsel. If you look at the definition for entryway, it is expanding the definition of an entryway to 25 feet from 15 feet. So it does mean that in the town of Parker, if this is adopted, smoking will not be allowed within 25 feet of the entryway. And expands the definition of smoking to include that use of the ESD and adds a definition for tobacco business. Under the general smoking restrictions, now any place of employment is restricted regardless of number of employees. That's a change in the legislate, legislation this year. As well as all hotel and motel rooms, there used to be some percentage of rooms that you could set aside as smoking. That's no longer the case. As well as prohibiting an assisted living facilities and assisting living residences. And then finally, the, under the exceptions to tobacco smoking restrictions, you see that it's striking the hotel and motel carve-out. But it's also adding in some signage requirements for retail tobacco business and cigar tobacco bar related to children. And those signage requirements we've included in there. So if there's any questions, I am happy to take this.
Counsel, questions for Kristin?
I'll move to approve.
Oh, wait, we gotta do public comment first. All right, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:33 p.m. I know there's no public, but we still have to, we still have to do it. My job is policy and procedure. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:33. And now Cheryl, I'll entertain, oh.
Actually, I just, I just want to make a statement. I just want it on the record. It's, it's hard. I understand increasing this, the foot, you know, 15 to 25 feet. Unfortunately, I think this puts a burden again on the business owner, as there's simply just not enforcement to come out and enforce 50 to 25 feet. Now you get a citizen that is feeling their rights are infringed, and the business owners are then responsible for enforcing the law. And I find that, and also, of course, I don't want to burden our, our boys and, boys and girls in blue to come out and deal with smokers within 25 feet. So again, I understand what the state is trying to do, but I just, I don't agree with, with 10 feet in making everybody feel good. So I just want to state that.
Okay. Other comments before I entertain a motion? No? Cheryl, entertain a motion then.
I move to approve ordinance number 5.75.2 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Cheryl and a second from Jeff. Counsel, please vote. Did everybody vote? Motion passes four to one with a one dissenting vote from Josh Rivero. Next item up is Item 8B. This is ordinance number 1.537 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 2.06 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning municipal campaign finance complaints. Kristin?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is also in response to new legislation that was signed at the end of May, Senate Bill 19232, which amends Colorado Revised Statute 145-111.79B, and it requires that any campaign finance complaint arising out of a municipal campaign matter must be filed exclusively with the clerk of the applicable municipality. Prior to this legislation, violations of the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act were filed with the Secretary of State. So because of this, we need to put in place an ordinance and authorizing the clerk to adopt rules to address complaints and violations under the Fair Campaign Practices Act when it relates to a municipal election matter. And so that is what is attached, is amending Chapter 2.06 to add in that provision. It also authorizes the clerk to establish procedures, which I've also included, and those will be adopted by the clerk if this passes through a sort of a separate rule-making process.
Counsel, any questions?
I do.
Cheryl?
What are the options not to approve an ordinance like this? What happens then?
Well, we have had municipalities that have directed their citizens to file those... to continue to file those complaints with the Colorado Secretary of State, and she has refused to take those. So, I mean, they would be looking to file them here. That's where the state law is telling them to file them. And so we would essentially have someone walk up and want to file a complaint. We would have no process in place to deal with that at the time.
Just seems like it's a shift of burden and responsibility from the Secretary of State to city clerk, which I think is wrong.
Would agree. We would agree. And you can see that in the ordinance, we did put in... Because we think it's a... That under the Constitution, it's the Colorado Secretary of State's responsibility to handle these complaints. So you'll see in Section 9 of the ordinance that if that statute is held to be unconstitutional or invalid, or the state legislature decides to go and amend that, that this ordinance would be repealed, and that responsibility would go back to the Secretary of State.
Other questions?
So, without doing the ordinance, and, I mean, without putting the ordinance on the books, could we still do a service to our citizens while the Secretary of State is refusing to do her job? Do we have to have an ordinance on the books to make our town clerks do the Secretary of State's job, or can we just be good stewards and do that until this is repealed by the Supreme Court?
Well, the... I mean, the problem is that it wouldn't allow... You have no way to authorize the clerk to put in place any sort of procedures, and so I think it would put her at a real disadvantage about how she's supposed to process those. It also authorizes her to hire hearing officers to handle that. So I think you're taking a stand, but it puts a heavy burden and a lot of ambiguity on the clerk's office.
Other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:38 PM. Seen no movement, we'll close public comment at 7:38, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
This is one I hate to support.
Yeah, it's...
It's not the first time a senior government has forced a junior government to do something that they're not... that they should be doing. I mean, it's...
It's, you know, it's interesting, because we're always, I think, as a council and as a county, we're always in favor of local control. But this is not local control. This is... This is a budget cut by the state and forcing it onto the municipalities, and it's quite unfortunate.
We're just a local election, and that's one thing, but this is for all campaigns that are held here. So I think it's problematic.
Well, I think you have to move past the imperfect issue that we have, and to me, it's about process. And if... Whether we agree or disagree, we have to put in place processes and procedures to actually allow our people to assist. So, I mean, to me, I think it's irrelevant as to how we got here. Moving forward, we need a process. If we don't have a process, I think we're dysfunctional.
I think you're right. I think Kristin's wrote the best ordinance possible, given the situation, and I like the "out" clause, for lack of a better word, so.
And we don't want to put our clerk at risk either.
Well, we don't put our clerk at risk, right? If we don't pass this ordinance, it'll just have to go to the Secretary of State.
But nothing will happen.
No, she would be... I mean, she has to take those complaints. She would just not have any authorization to hire hearing officers or establish rules or procedures, so she'd...
But would you agree that's not our job?
I think that it's the Secretary of State's job to be handling complaints.
But so we're clear, the state statute that just passed delegates that to our clerk. So that would be the law of the land, is that the clerk has to take the complaint.
We can't vote against...
To take the complaint?
Yes.
But does she have to adjudicate it?
She has to adjudicate the complaint.
Or the new law.
The new law, and this is a burden that's being placed on all jurisdictions in the state of Colorado. So until that case is decided as to the constitutionality of the statute, if we get complaints in this election or future elections, we have to have a process to deal with those complaints. I don't like it any more than you do, but unfortunately, that's the law that's been handed to the town of Parker and every other municipality in the state.
Has CML taken a position on this?
No, I mean, they were... They're sort of aware of the tension between the, you know, the Secretary of State not taking jurisdiction and asking the municipalities to, but they haven't... I mean, they're aware of the issue, but they haven't taken a position.
No official position, anyway.
Right, and I think they probably wouldn't until we saw some litigation come through, and then you'd see the amicus briefs from CML.
Other questions or discussions, guys? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.537 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from John and a second from Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, 8C. Counsel, I'll need a motion to continue ordinance... or continue this item, 8C, which is ordinance number 9.300 on second reading to a date certain of September 16th, 2019. They're still working out the details on this one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie. I almost wrote Renee. I think she was sitting right here, you know, Debbie. Counsel, please vote when that pops up. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, 8D. Counsel, I'll need a motion to continue 8D, which is ordinance number 9.301 on second reading to a date certain of September 16th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie, and I'm talking slow, so the computer can get caught up. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
We're still on track for these two items? Just small details being worked out?
Yes. The district has asked for... or the American Academy has asked for clarification.
So, yeah, it's on track. It's just, we're communicating back and forth with the IGAs, and one's with American Academy directly and not through the school district, since they're a charter school, and so we just needed another week to get it back from them. And same thing with the school marshal program. It's also still on track. It's just clearing up some language in the IGA back and forth, because we're updating it from what it used to be.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next item is 8E. This is ordinance number 5.59.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 6.03 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning noise regulations. Kristin, this doesn't say that I'm not allowed to talk in public because of noise regulations, right?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Amendments, yeah.
It's currently Chapter 6.03 prohibits the use of outdoor loudspeakers and public address systems between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM if it is for a non-commercial purpose, and at any time of day if it is for any commercial purpose. We met at study session on August 12th, 2019, and town council directed that we bring forward an ordinance to allow outdoor loudspeakers and public address systems during the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, regardless of whether it was for a commercial purpose or a non-commercial purpose. So that is what I'm bringing forward to you tonight. You can see that the use or operation of any loudspeaker, public address system, or similar device between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM is the only prohibition, and then I struck any reference to whether it was for commercial or non-commercial uses.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for Kristin? Okay, seen none. We'll open it up for public comment at 7:45 PM if there's anyone here wishing to address counsel. Seen none, we'll close public comment at 7:45, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 5.59.1 on second reading. Second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from John. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before counsel, we will adjourn at 7:46 PM.